It was just that was not.
No, it's true she was getting.
She was.
Yeah.
I want to ask you.
We're good to go.
Oh, a pin.
For forty anniversary.
Yeah, yeah. It's so cool, right? You're supposed to wear it. Okay. Say when, Sherry. When? Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. Today is our Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty-three, seven P M. Regular meeting. Um, please be advised that assisted listening devices are on the table in the back of the room for those who wish to use them. Our city clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Hoxsey. Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
Mayor Malcony.
Yeah.
A note for the record that Councilmember G has an excused absence this evening.
I will now ask everyone to please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Mayor and councilmembers, I can make a recommendation when we get to the policy matters that we take H one and H two at the same time.
Yes.
Talk about the budget and C I P together.
Thank you. Um, with that recommendation to take H one and H two at the same time, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Um, next we have items for the good of the city. And we have something that we always look forward to, which is our Arinda Association Annual Report. Um, and first I'm going to ask our Parks and Rec Director Trimble to uh make the introductions.
Madam Mayor, thank you, councilmembers. For the record, Todd Trimble, Parks and Recreation Director. I don't recall doing the introductions before, but I have no problem whatsoever. We work very closely with the Arinda Association, as you know, on all the many activities and the lease and whatnot. And so um today, yeah, tonight, um Vice President Alex Drexel is going to give the report. If you don't know Alex, uh, we certainly do. He's been a stalwart on our Parks and Recreation Commission for several years, including a stint as Chairperson. So he's uh very familiar with a lot of the things we do as well. So um let's get right to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Drexel.
Thanks, Todd, for the introduction. Uh, good evening, councilmembers. Happy to be here and share with you what we're doing on the uh with the O A. And also I'd like to take this opportunity too to just get feedback from you guys and kind of learn how we can better work with one another, all of our programs and whatnot. Um, as you know, the Arinda Association has been around for a very long time. It was here before the city and it was initially a means for the people of Arinda to kind of organize and help influence decision making by the border supervisors. And then after incorporation, this uh that the O A turned it more into kind of a public service uh organization. And so now we've got these programs and events that we do to help benefit the people of Arinda. So you've got you've got the report here um on twenty twenty-four and it covers what we've done. I can kind of add some color to it, but um you know, the main thing, one of the main things that we do is is the newspaper. And so it's a great community asset. Um, it's, you know, one of the only few ways that local businesses and organizations can reach out to the community. Uh, and also it's one of the only sources of local news. And so it's a it's a vital uh service that we provide to the community. Uh, and it it's self-supporting through fundraising and through ad sales and uh and things are going well with the paper. We've got a new executive editor, Clay Callum, who came on board that took Kathy's place. He's doing a great job. He's taking a uh kind of a fresh look at the paper. I don't know if you've noticed any changes since since he took over, you know, a lot more imagery and focus on food and uh local sports, high school sports and things like that. So um hopefully, you know, some of that is is uh is taken well. Um, the S A T, any any questions on any of the newspaper? I mean, do you want, do you want to, you can just interrupt me if you've got questions on some of these programs that I'm covering here, but no. Okay.
Any questions?
Just one, um, has there been an active effort to get high school students involved? I noticed there were more Marimani students doing reporting and I was just wondering if that was like a formalized program or just sort of happened.
We've talked about it. We need we need more riders. Um, and we've we've actually kind of looked for people to help in ad sales as well, uh, school age folks. So um that that has been talked about, but no kind of formal program, but we've we've kind of talked about that in in terms of recruiting strategy. Yeah. Okay. Um, S A T, so you've got some numbers ahead of you uh in front of you here around the number of rides that we do. Those are, those completed rides are just a a single leg of each journey. So if you want to think about a round trip, you know, kind of half that number, uh, we take, we do a lot of of uh rides, taking seniors to doctor's appointments uh and whatnot. And so, you know, it's it's again, it's a it's a vital service that we provide to the community. We've got about seventy volunteers, volunteer drivers that help us out with that. And then we've got this great new software program that helps, is helping us automate the whole process of matching volunteers to riders. It's 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 excellent. We're becoming more efficient as well. Yeah, so that's that's the the S A T program. Um, we've got a new uh manager of the program, Eloise Sotelo. And uh there's actually, they're working on an article in the newspaper to kind of dig deep on seniors around town and get more into some of the statistics there around the service.
Actually, I did have a question, Alex. I know in the in the prior years, it's sometimes been a challenge to get enough volunteers for seniors around town because there's such a great need for those rides and the service that S A T and Arinda O A provides is really critical and such a lovely thing and unique. Um, how, can you speak to that? Is it still like, do you know in terms of trends?
It it's it's actually, it it's an acute issue during the summer, like these months. And I was going to mention that we need volunteers for the summer months because the vol- the volunteers go on vacation. And so we need people to fill in to even, you know, give us a couple of rides in the summer. So um, you know, we we're always looking for 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 volunteers.
Okay.
Ads in the paper, you know, word of mouth. Um, you know, we we run the volunteer center too, so we coordinate volunteering kind of across the board. And so that's one of the opportunities that we promote. We've got a page on the website too for all the volunteer opportunities, including being a driver for senior around town. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so, you know, we move on to the car show on the Fourth of July. So the car show uh last year was was amazingly uh successful. Uh, we sold out all of the slots like way ahead of time. There are roughly two hundred slots for motorcycles and cars. Uh, and we had very strong, a very strong presence from from the sponsors as well. And this year's going well too. Uh, we've already got, I think, fifty slots, car slots sold, uh, and we're bringing in some new sponsors. We're trying to get car dealerships involved, more car dealerships involved in the in the in the event. But overall, um, you know, it's 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 been a fairly successful, one of the largest events in in La Marinda that we've been running. So uh, you know, appreciate that the partnership with the city and shutting down the streets and kind of helping provide the services around that that uh that program. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do it. So.
Any questions about the car show? And what's the date? Just so we put it.
September, September sixth. Um, and we've been doing the car show for twenty years and seniors around town has been around for twenty years. So we've been doing these things for a long time. They're kind of staples of the community and and we're, you know, excited to keep things moving forward, those things. The Fourth of July, um, this will be the forty-first Fourth of July Parade. And I think what's new this year is uh we've got, we've got that that big shade structure uh over the, you know, over the kind of community center lawn that we're going to use for a carnival and that wasn't there last year. And so we're working on um all sorts of kind of classic carnival games, ring toss. Uh, there's like a a a fast pitch, so you know how fast you can throw, uh, throwing footballs and all sorts of stuff um that you can, that the kids will be be able to do uh in that space. So that's that's kind of the thing that we're excited about, is having that.
So the Fourth of July is older than Arinda.
It is. It is. It was actually.
Not the Fourth of July, the Fourth of July celebration in Arinda is older.
I knew what you meant, your communication received. I mean, but uh, yeah, it's true. Actually, the Fourth of July, I wrote an article on this, actually. The Fourth of July was was meant to promote the incorporation of the of the city. The Fourth of July Parade was put together to kind of help in that effort. So, yeah. So we're excited about that. Um, any any questions? We're gonna, there's gonna be a band, there's gonna be uh food trucks. We're trying to get ice cream, um, which is always nice. Uh, there's a cakewalk in the carnival, so it should be fun.
It sounds amazing. I think we're all looking forward to it.
Okay. You know.
Do you have more entries this year than typical, do you know?
Uh, I don't know about the entries, but I know, don't you guys have like a trolley or something you're gonna use? So that's that's exciting.
Yeah.
So.
With a lot of the founders, hopefully.
Cool. Uh, and you know, what I was thinking of, we're trying to, you know, we've got the seniors around town program. We're trying to kind of pivot and and provide more services around kind of the youth and kind of young, the younger age brackets. And so, you know, the carnival is kind of an example of that, of us trying to take kind of move more in that direction. And also we've had the T-shirt contest. So we just had the T-shirt contest for the Fourth of July Parade, a second grader from Delray won. Uh, and then uh the car show one is still, we're still figuring out who's the winner's going to be. But uh, you know, we're trying to kind of think about opportunities for us to help out and uh that, those those age demographics as well as, you know, as well as the seniors.
Right.
Uh, what else? We, last year we did the forum, uh, the Public Safety Forum, and uh I think that went pretty well. We've got, you know, it up on our YouTube channel. You can you can replay the forum up on our on our website. Uh, and so, you know, we're looking for opportunities with you all to have forums in into the future. So, you know, if you guys have ideas and uh for for projects that we can work on in that in that area, that that's that's more than happy to talk about that.
Any discussion on that or?
No, I have an unrelated question when you're done.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's it. Any?
Second, um, going back to the seniors around town, um, I I was just in a meeting with the uh the SWAT group and they were talking about the Spirit Van that Lafayette and Maraga have. Um, is it the case that theirs is one that's a somewhat paid service and ours is entirely volunteer and free? Or do we also participate in the Spirit Van at some level?
I think, I'll have to get back, I'm pretty sure this, I thought the Spirit Van was free as well. Uh, you, are you saying it was a paid service?
It it might be. I couldn't tell if there was a nominal charge or not. I was just kind of learning.
Yeah, actually, I'm I'm pretty sure it's, there's a number of services. Actually, we just did kind of an analysis of the surrounding services uh that also, you know, helped this area. And um, and that was one of them. And we use that, we use that to actually kind of calibrate our program. Um, maybe you guys should know, we we um, we found out um the amount of, I think, getting too much detail, but the amount of um staff hours per kind of ride provided for our service was much, much higher than all the other services that provide a similar thing in our area. And so we did cut back on our hours a little bit for seniors around town. It used to be from nine to four Monday through Friday, and we're cutting it back from to to nine to two Monday through Thursday and then nine to noon on Friday. And we did an analysis of when all the rides were being done and the vast majority of rides were being done kind of earlier in the day. So we don't think people are going to kind of lose out too much on that. But we did that after the analysis and looking kind of at some of the other programs and seeing that we were kind of a little bit off the mark with some of the metrics.
It's really interesting. I was surprised that we had similar but distinct solutions. So I was just, I was curious to look at it.
Yeah, I I don't know too much about that program. I know it was just mentioned when we were kind of doing our analysis, but um, yeah.
I'll just, one comment, um, I always remind these guys that uh we hear from a lot of high school students around February looking for summer internships for experience. So to the extent you have project work, especially if it's seasonal, uh, keep in mind that uh, you know, they really want work experience. They, you know, so if you've got things that are interesting, there's a whole vein you can tap, even in late middle school and in high school.
Oh, cool. Excellent. Good to know.
Any other questions? Yeah.
I just wanted to um share, uh, Alex, that um I've had a lot of experience with seniors around town for my mom. And it was was really, really well well done and very personable. And um, everybody was always very patient and so much hands-on, you know, double-checking. She's ready, double-checking the 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 time is right, reminding, reminding. Um, I don't know, I just think it's it's a lot more than people realize. It's not just saying my doctor's appointment's at nine and and somebody will be there, but it's who's being, who's going to be there and a reminder about it? And then who's taking you home and a reminder about it? And.
Yeah, completely agree. I actually recently I had volunteers to drive it myself just to see, it's like I've been on the board. It's like, well, I should be doing this. Uh, and so it was a great experience for me as a as a volunteer, just to get to know some of these folks and their stories and and whatnot. So it's, it was great kind of relationship building as well.
Yeah, yeah. But my point is it's a lot of staff work.
Yeah.
A lot. And it it it's because they need reminders.
Yeah.
They won't be ready unless you remind them.
Yeah, you need to follow up on the on the location too, because often they, it it, you know, the building's wrong or something like that. You have to kind of follow up and double-check and make sure that all that's correct, otherwise the driver ends up running into problems. So, yeah.
And I would think that all that, you know, that constant contact provides reassurance, provides socialization. It provides so much that um benefits seniors.
Yeah, the message.
And volunteers.
The message is, wow, they're so nice.
Yeah. That's incredible. That is really incredible. Yep. Um, I guess I I had one question, which is um, was there, has there been any talk of doing any um, aside from sort of candidates, you know, council candidate stuff? I know, O A always does that forum. Is there any talk about um or planning for another substantive um community forum?
There hasn't, um, but we're open to drumming something up, you know? We did that, what did you, we did the fire evacuation war or the emergency evacuation one back in twenty nineteen? I don't know if that needs to be, you know, refreshed.
The city just did a a community education night on emergency preparedness and evacuation. Um, and is planning to do two others in the fall potentially with the schools. But.
Okay.
So whether there's need for another, beyond that, I don't know. I think we'll know more by the fall, but.
Okay.
That could be an area of collaboration.
That'd be great, yeah.
Because potentially the type of resident, the the resident, the schools one, would, the school, um, the forums in coordination with the schools will probably target a demographic of parents and 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 young people, so.
That'd be good.
You know, if we targeted a different demographic together, but.
Yeah, for sure. I can follow up again.
Any other que- thank you. I mean, other, just just to say, I think a lot of us have background in involvement when, you know, personally with O A as well and really appreciate everything that the Arinda Association does. Uh, as you noted, it it was the organization that sort of led to our city's incorporation and is really um, has been kind of a bedrock for providing so many wonderful events and services. Including seniors around town, which I think is really a jewel, a real jewel for our community that a lot of places don't have. Like, it's very hard for seniors to to get rights like this in such a trustworthy way, as Councilmember Riley pointed out. So thank you.
Yep, and we appreciate the partnership with the city. So um, you know, with the Public Works Department and Todd and uh, you know, the Police Department and whatnot, helping us with these events. Just it wouldn't happen without without your partnership.
Any other?
Great.
We're really looking forward to the July fourth event. I know it's a ton of work, so thank you in advance.
Of course.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, um, that brings us to public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council members and items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council members on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. So is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the council during public forum? I see no speaker cards and I see no hands raised, so I will close public forum. And that takes us to item F, which is our consent calendar. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion unless a council member or a member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as proposed?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Um, that takes us to item G, which is our public hearing. Um, our public hearing item tonight is item G one, the public hearing to confirm the diagram and assessment for the Arinda Street Lighting and Landscape Assessment District, number one nine eight six dash one, Zones L forty-two, M nine and M eleven for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, and the recommendation is to adopt the Resolution twenty-nine twenty-five, confirming the diagram and assessment for the Arinda Street Lighting and Landscape District that I just referenced. And so with that, I will ask staff for the introduction and presentation.
Um, good morning, members of the council. Scott Christie, our Public Works Director, will uh present tonight's public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. This item is the third in a series of three action items that the City Council takes on this assessment district that was formed in nineteen eighty-six. The first meeting, uh, calls for the engineer's report to be prepared. The second meeting approves that report and then this final meeting confirms the report. And then the next step would be that the levies actually applied for the coming fiscal year. There's three zones in this district, um, L forty-two and M nine, which are primarily residential areas and are exclusively for street lighting. And then M eleven is a more complicated district since it includes not only street lighting, but also irrigation for plants and then plant maintenance, so to speak, in the downtown areas, which are on both sides of Highway twenty-four, the theater district and then the village district here. What's different about the first two zones I mentioned is that in nineteen ninety-nine, a C, an election was held basically to consider adjusting each year by the C P I, by the inflation index, basically, the rates. So for the first two districts, that was passed, however, for M eleven district, it did not pass. One, one thing that's done with this annual assessment is the C P I is uh, is determined. I mean, it's determined by others, but then the report incorporates that then into the first two districts. So you'll see in the report and the staff report that there is a change per unit of two dollars roughly, two dollars and eight cents for L forty-two and two dollars and nineteen cents for M nine. For M eleven, there's no change because there's no allowance for that. And then what's done is is we look at the the costs incurred and that's reported here. For the first two districts, we we more or less, um, for the first district, we end up accumulating a slight amount of money, maybe ten thousand dollars. For the second district, we kind of break even. But then for the M eleven district, we do end up having to contribute from the general fund to keep that whole. So you'll see that in this case, there's a general fund contribution and that amounts to um about uh seventy, seventy seven, seventy-seven thousand then. Uh, so that has been going up, going up over the years. Um, certainly electricity and water costs have gone up, I would say, higher than the inflation rate that we're actually experiencing. And then labor costs have gone up too for the component that covers the maintenance of these areas. It's exclusively through M C's contract with us that covers landscape work, repairs. So it varies somewhat from year to to year, although for the past few years, it's been running forty to fifty thousand. Our forecast for this coming year is about fifty thousand for that component. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember questions?
I just have one. Is the M eleven district primarily commercial and rental properties as opposed to single-family homes or?
Yes. I'd say more commercial than rental, so to speak. You know, there's not too many apartments, I would say, within that district. There's probably a few, but.
It it looks like it's really the downtown commercial areas that are covered by M eleven. So there's more of a a public benefit to everyone in Arinda to make sure that those areas are kept lit and clean and all of that because everyone uses the areas.
Yes, so more than just benefiting those owners. That's one of the, you know, evaluations that done on, uh, as part of the so-called engineer's report.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions?
I had almost the same question, which is, um, when you have your expenditures split up by special benefit and general benefit, I mean, when I was asking questions about this, it, the answers felt like it is primarily general benefit and would be lesser. I mean, the mismatch is so glaring, the way it's presented, um, you know, it would prompt questions about why the business owners aren't having to do more of that work if we're, if we're maintaining commercial properties for the owners. And I guess what I'm wondering is, is the, i- is there any logic to recategorizing as between special benefit and gen- general benefit? And if not, why not?
The amount that the engineer's report determined that is a special benefit? Let me get the numbers for that district.
I just to read it, it's it's basically ninety-seven thousand special benefit and only sixteen thousand general benefit.
That sounds right.
Yeah, and as Councilmember Hoxsey said, the description sounds more like a general benefit. And um, it is, it's problematic when you look at it the way it's presented.
They they use sort of a set criteria that's consistent between the the three districts. So we could. So, we could talk to the consultant to see if there's other ways to do it. Our way of thinking is that since, I believe, council supports the concept of increasing the livelihood of downtown, that whether or not we, we charge it to this district, we'd still want to do it because we believe there is a benefit for the public as a whole. So, it's true, we could a portion less because we do have some discretion. We, we rely on MCE to, and they do in their invoicing every month, they show X number of hours for this downtown area that's covered by the district. We could review that more closely and tell them, well, charge some of this to some other portion, and we could do it that way. But I think in the end, it, it benefits all to get the work done. You know, even though we charge it to this district, we could charge it somewhere else, and I think we'd still want to spend the money. I mean, I will say that we are, we're closely monitoring MCE's work now that we have more resources, in particular, our new facilities and maintenance superintendent, who has been working closely with MCE to understand what work are they doing? How are they prioritizing? How are they charging their work? And this is one of the areas that, you know, he'll be able to concentrate more on this coming year.
And, um, thank you. That, that actually makes sense, and I wouldn't recommend a change in that, in light of that answer. Thank you.
Can I just make one comment about it? Because the other benefit of having it displayed in this way is that in the future, as property owners and business owners want to know what the city's investment is looking like in the downtown, instead of us hiding it in different funds and budgets within our operating budget, we can demonstrate and show them this is the kind of investment we're making in the downtown from an ongoing maintenance standpoint, so.
Yeah, go ahead. Um, this is, this isn't the sole source of money for landscaping, is it? And water and planting? I think you ref, you suggested that maybe we could get money elsewhere if this wasn't enough to handle these tasks. I'm saying if we wanted to do more downtown with landscaping and irrigation, would, does it have to come from this source, or can we get elsewhere?
No, it, it could come from elsewhere. I want to say we have a very tight budget, but there's always room to adjust and prioritize. So, we could do, consider less, less road repairs and more landscaping. I mean, you, you know, to some extent, you know, part of it's road-related on the medians. So, there's some flexibility, if that answers your question.
Like, if we were to dress up just different areas downtown that look barren and forgotten and abandoned, um.
The council has complete discretion on how much money you want to spend on either landscaping or landscaping improvements or maintenance improvements in the downtown.
Okay, so another day. Thank you.
Yep.
To follow up with that, does that include things like sidewalks?
Yes, you have discretion to do and spend your money however you'd like.
I just noticed recently, you know, over on the end of town by Bon-Tai and, and the fairs building, the sidewalk was coming up with tree roots and things.
Typically, and I don't want to speak for Scott, but typically, the responsibility of the sidewalk adjacent to a property is a property owner's responsibility. And so, if we've notified them that there's some issues that need to be addressed, we could do that. If they are not responsive to it, we could certainly pursue trying to repair ourselves.
It might just be something to look at before someone trips like me.
Okay, and I'm sorry, which area in particular was this you were referencing?
It's that block between fairs and the antique store, you know.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're aware of that. We do work with them, and actually, we do some grinding. The, the exception to that sidewalk maintenance responsibility owner would be where there's a city street tree. We generally do take care of that as a city item, since it's a city tree. And oftentimes, unfortunately, it is the tree that's responsible for heaving the sidewalk.
I, I just noticed it recently, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, um, is there any public, uh, comments?
This is a public hearing, so I need to open the public hearing.
Um, in that case, I will open the public hearing and then take any public comment. Do we have any public comment on our public hearing? Hearing none, and we have no speaker cards. I will close the public hearing and bring this back to council discussion and adoption of the item or further direction, if any. And what we are being asked to do is to adopt Resolution 2925. So, any discussion on that?
No, it seems like we're doing the right thing, and it's important that we maintain the downtown and, and, um, make sure that it's well-lit and clean and hospitable to everybody who wants to use it, so.
I would move to adopt the resolution. I was, uh, really pleased with the presentation.
Likewise, um.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, all in favor of adopting Resolution 2925, confirming the diagram and assessment for the Arinda Street Lighting and Landscape Assessment District, number 1986-1 Zones L42, M9, and M11 for fiscal year ending 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, and thank you, Director Christie.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our, uh, policy matters. Item H on our agenda, and I think we, uh, modified our agenda, so we were going to take Items H1 and H2 together. Um, I will note, uh, item H1 is the adoption of fiscal years 2025 and 20, uh, 26, 27, biannual budget, and item H2 is the adoption of our capital improvement plan, CIP, for fiscal years 2026 through 2030. And I see, uh, Mayor and councilmembers will be a tag team tonight. Okay. Doug and Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayors and members of the council. I'm Doug Lesch, your Assistant City Manager. Uh, as noted, I've been for you is the proposed budget for fiscal years 25, 26, and 26, 27. Um, you've heard some of this before, but for the benefit of folks, maybe tuning in for the first time tonight, and that didn't, uh, catch the May 6th council meeting, I'd just like to sort of give a budget basics and background. The city adopts a biannual budget every two years. Uh, we have sort of a multi-year budget cycle. That's an industry best practice. Those budget cycles align with election cycles, uh, so, uh, that the council gets to, um, incorporate their priorities and, and goals into, uh, the two-year budget. So, that actually starts in February when we have, um, uh, strategic planning workshop. It actually happened at the beginning of March this year, um, and, uh, it requires a lot of staff work. We left off, uh, on the, uh, visual aid at the May 6th initial budget discussion, so that's our draft proposed, uh, biannual budget. Uh, we received feedback and input, uh, from council, which, uh, did not indicate for us to make any changes. Since then, uh, the draft proposed budget was shared with the, uh, a number of advisory committees. Uh, the CIP was shared with the Planning Commission, who founded, uh, was, uh, in conformance with the general plan. Uh, we, uh, bought Measure R piece, uh, to the SSTOC, uh, the Finance Advisory Committee. On May 29th, we got a chance to review the whole budget. Their supportive of, was presented, and the Library Partial Tax Independent Review Committee got a chance to review, uh, the piece that is dependent on the library partial tax. Uh, and they also, uh, liked, uh, what was in the budget and, uh, uh, have recommended, uh, that to, to be adopted. That was the recommendation of those two boards. So, we're back before you, uh, for what we're hoping is a, a final presentation and adoption of the budget. Um, a couple of things, uh, to note, and, and these are all things I presented last time. This is a balanced budget. It maintains current programs and services. Staffing levels remain constant. There's no new regular staffing added to this budget. Some of the things that are new or service-level enhancements include, uh, the storm drain mapping study, uh, for about a half million dollars being paid for out of Measure R. Uh, there's going to be a new emergency operations plan and training. And that's, uh, several hundred thousand dollar investment, and that's coming out of Measure R. The crossing guards contract, uh, to provide crossing guards at certain intersections, uh, in conjunction with the schools. They will reimburse us for fifty percent of the hundred and twenty thousand dollar cost. Again, that's a service enhancement, was in prior budgets. Um, and then, uh, throughout the budgets, increased leverage of technology to improve efficiency, police and planning, records manager and finance throughout the organization. One of the other things I usually do on the slide is present challenges. Um, so, uh, those are the two challenges from last time. The one item I do sort of want to add here is typically when the state ends up in financial trouble, uh, they look to local government to help solve their financial issues and woes and, uh, to how to take from us to balance their budget. I've seen what's happening. I'm a little concerned. There's been no specific, um, attack on our finances, but it's something we're definitely going to be monitoring over the next two years, uh, because there's some concern there. And so, the other thing that this budget contains is some proposed transfers. Uh, these are one-time uses of accumulated, uh, resources out of the general fund. So, uh, at the end of last fiscal year, so June 30th, 2025, so fiscal year 24, 25, we had an, uh, unassigned general fund balance of over five million dollars. Uh, so that's, uh, we had fund balance that was accumulated in excess of the reserve requirement, uh, which is fifty percent of our operating, um, of about five million dollars, which is discretionary, and you can spend on a variety of things. We always suggest those are one-time, uh, expense because it's not ongoing, uh, revenue. So, uh, what we are recommending is, um, that, uh, well, first off, the council policy means about nine hundred seventy-five thousand of that is going to get used to increase, uh, the reserve for emergency, uh, fifty percent because our budget's going up by about, uh, 1.8 billion, so about nine hundred thousand, nine hundred seventy-five thousand needs to be sort of transitioned to, uh, the, the council fifty percent reserve. That leaves some additional funding, six hundred eighty-five thousand of which we're recommending is transferred to the Risk Management Internal Service Fund, uh, to replenish reserves, uh, based on some significant activity that occurred there at the end of last year, uh, and the beginning of this year. If you're curious what that is, we had a settlement, uh, uh, with the ranges, uh, around some erosion control. We had the OC stipulation, uh, and then just insurance rates grew, and we didn't make that adjustment last year. We incorporated it in this year, and then going forward in our internal rate, we charge departments to be sufficient enough to cover those increases. Um, and then we're also recommending that two million dollars be transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund, Fund 700, your, um, the place we pay for capital that has no other funding for, source. So, it's sort of, uh, the general fund's contribution to capital needs, uh, throughout the community. And that leaves roughly 1.4 million on-programmed, and we're about to finish fiscal year, um, 24, 25, right? So, maybe I got that slightly backwards, yes. And, and so we expect we're going to add about one million, maybe a little bit more, uh, to our fund balance because we're going to finish the year with revenues more than expenses. So, even though this shows that approximately 1.4 million remains on-programmed, about one, 1.2 will be added to that, meaning that there's about, uh, 2.5 million or so remaining in general fund, fund balance that's unassigned and unspoken for, gives council the flexibility if an emergency arises or, uh, a program that nobody sort of contemplated at this point, but is important, uh, to the city. We, we do have resources to be reactive and, um, to, to take advantage of opportunities that come. So, uh, again, staffing stays constant, uh, at, at forty point five full-time employment positions. Uh, there's two minute duration positions in there that is set to expire during the budget cycle. Uh, when we get to the point and make decisions on those. And there's an enhancement of temporary staff in certain areas of operations. Again, for several use attendance, it has to do with the reorganization. And then we're hoping to bring on a, a GIS technician that's a temporary part-time employee. So, um, then, we did, uh, find some changes, even though, uh, uh, there were no recommended changes from either council or any other groups that we've spoken to. Um, so in the final review of the document and finance, we noticed, uh, that we had incorporated a couple of changes into the detail sections, but it didn't feed up to the summary. So, uh, for the general fund, uh, that amounts to about thirty thousand dollars over the two years. It's displayed on the chart, twenty-four thousand the first year and forty-six hundred in the second. Uh, so if somebody was really looking, they would see there's this difference. Those were changes we incorporated, had to, um, professional services that didn't feed all the way to our summary sheet. Then there's, uh, Assessment District, M11, um, you know, we, uh, made an adjustment to more accurately reflect the maintenance that's going on, so you could see all the costs in one place. And that was the sixteen thousand five hundred you see there. And then the last item is our, our Building Maintenance Internal Service Fund. I, actually, this was me, uh, for, did not program in, uh, repairs and improvements there that don't rise to the level of a CIP, but that occur during the time period, right? So, these aren't ongoing regular scheduled maintenance items, uh, but they're definitely not things that are worthy of inclusion in a CIP, which would be much bigger. So, um, you know, I accidentally defunded them to the tune of eighty-five thousand dollars, which is actually needed in both years. So, that's the, the last operating change. Now, both items are open at once, so I'm going to sort of hand it over to Scott. But the other change, uh, this is that you'll see in the operating budget because we incorporate the capital budget for the two-year period. You're going to appropriate, which is our legal authority to spend money for those two years. And part of that has to do with CIP and Fund 70704. And so, I'll let Scott explain what those two items are. They're several items.
Thank you.
Okay, let me try to flip ahead here. Is that your last slide?
Yeah, you, they will need to slip presentations to his, and my last slide says conclusion, so we'll use.
Okay, and again, my little slide deck only has a few of the highlights out of this staff report. We have, I think, minimal significant changes in the, uh, in the document. Let's see, there we are. Okay.
The big green button moves it forward.
Yeah, so I thought, there we go. So, just a recap of the value over this two-year cycle, which is the focus. It's twenty-two million and thirty-four projects. That includes some projects that are continuing on from the current fiscal year. And then over the entire five-year forward period going up to fiscal year 2030, you have thirty-seven million and forty projects. The revisions from May 6th, um, some miscellaneous reconciliations with finance, uh, that I'm not going to list in detail. We increased the funding for this library elevator modernization slash rehabilitation. We're not too experienced with that, so we've been working at that for the last few months, trying to understand the scope of that project, what's really required, what the best timing is. In any case, we did find that if we were to do a full modernization to bring it up to current code and replace key components, now that that elevator, the public elevator, is twenty-five years old or so. Rather than the hundred thousand, um, hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's more like two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, we're continuing to study that. We don't know what the optimal time to do that. It may be next fiscal year. It may be a few years down the line. So, we're still somewhat in a research, uh, mode right now. But to be on the safe side, we do want to go ahead and show that increased funding for that purpose. We also made some changes to some of the annual paving projects to more accurately reflect that we do have reimbursable amounts typically with those projects for utility company. Manhole lowering and raising when. Manhole lowering and raising when the paving is grinded and then raised back up with an overlay, for example. So the utility companies usually will work with us to include that in our contract, but then they will reimburse us for the actual cost. So going for the next few years, it's not going to be a big amount. We're showing twenty-five thousand per year, but that does then increase the Fund Seven Hundred expenditures. But then we do get that reimbursed back after the work is completed. Then we added three new roadway repair projects, slope stability related type work. That relates to some discoveries we made since that May sixth time. Thanks to our crew that observed these issues. We did work with our on-call geotech to do some initial evaluations, which is how we came up with these amounts. We'd like to complete at least two of these if they're all three of them before the next winter season. So we don't get into bigger issues with those particular instances. And there are the C I P detailed pages if if you want a little more information on those. And I think that concludes what I had. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that, or we could return to Doug and then hold the questions till afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
So the one item I would add is there is one more slide online. I won't have them flip back over. But basically, it indicates that the general fund for the first year, we we have resources in excess of uses by about two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. In year two, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand. So the general fund is balanced using just current resources. With the exception of the transfers, which use the accumulated resources. As far as the all the capital and other funds, again, we're balanced. If you're using available accumulated resources and current resources, none of the funds are driven to a negative position requiring interfund borrowing or anything. So it's it's a balanced budget.
Thank you. Thank you for an excellent, really excellent presentation. Do we have questions? Okay, vice mayor.
It's a procedural question. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can limit the discretionary spending on that library elevator, which the city manager knows I have got to be in my bonnet about. You know, going from a hundred to two twenty-five to go one floor is just unacceptable. And I know you're at the mercy of what gets quoted and what code is, but I would like to find out if there's a way that we could say, if you can get it done for a hundred and fifty or less, you've got discretion. And if it's more than one fifty, that we find a way that it can come back to us for the approval. Can we do something where some we can add a control?
Yeah, I think that the staff is working on a couple of different approaches to the elevator. One is, I mean, and I think Doug and Scott might be able to talk to the amount of service that this elevator is needed over time and whether or not it makes sense to continue to Band-Aid the approach, which is what we've been doing and dealing with outages, intermittent outages over a long period of time. I don't know if you want to speak to sort of the service condition of this facility.
So I don't think I characterize it characterize it as being requiring Band-Aids. I mean, it's a pretty decent condition, all things considered. But I mean, we do have an ongoing preventive maintenance contract for the machine. But just to back up a little, it it is a requirement, of course, to have an elevator for accessibility in this situation. There might be some ways around, but practically speaking, it is a necessary device. And the city council, of course, would have opportunity to review any contract award. In either case, even a minimal type semi-modernization, if you will, would be around a hundred thousand dollars. So it's above the threshold for which we'd need city council approval, which is currently sixty thousand. And then if we went to more full approach, you'd again have opportunity to review the contract and either approve it or send it back to the drawing board. I think like many things, it it's a matter of do you want to pay now and maybe have a few added benefits and some savings from future maintenance? Or do you want to push it off and pay later? It it's not quite like a roadway in that, you know, when things fail, they fail when you're shut down. So that's a big disadvantage. So we're continuing to talk to firms and talk to other cities to determine the best approach. But we would, again, be required to come back to city council for a contract award.
One thing I'd like to just mention, if the comparison is against what had previously been programmed there and what we're showing now, understand that that number, the original hundred and hundred and twenty-five is been that number for the four years I've been here, right? And so it's just sort of, it's an old quote.
Yeah, and today I looked at a budget for a downtown Manhattan nineteen twenties building to modernize their elevator for a million dollars for a high-rise in Manhattan. And we're going to spend a quarter million dollars for one floor. And I understand it's it's really an important elevator, but it's also small and small in scope. And I'm I'm begging you to find a way to spend less than two hundred and twenty-five to to modernize it and get it done. Don't put it off and and have twenty-five thousand a year in repairs. But but please try to find a way to do it cheaper.
We certainly will. And of course, as always, when you comparatively bid it, you get the market price in theory. And, you know, we'd hope to get several bids, but it is kind of specialty work and you you are kind of at the mercy. And, yeah, there's not a whole lot of little elevators like this around. So we'll see, but of course, we try to get the most competitive price.
Any other?
I would just add on the elevator, having had the experience with the school district, elevators seem to be very expensive in California. We we had a very expensive experience with the school district with the new building at Sleepy Hollow. I think it's really most prudent thing to do is to make it as modern right now when we have extra money in our budget. We don't know what the future is going to be in the state of California. Anything we could do to make that as modern as possible now, I think, would be good investment so that it continues to work. We have to have it. People use it every day.
I would disagree. I just personally, I do not want to see the best possible elevator there.
Not the best possible, but when it works every day is important.
It has to work. That's all it has to do.
I I I understand. I I just.
Let's difference of opinions. Do questions and then just bring it back for discussion. Any other questions from council members? Okay, I had I had one. The the report is just excellent. Thank you. Thank you both for both reports. And I know this is for you, Doug. And I think on some level, I know I'm asking you to look into a crystal ball that we don't have. But where are our areas of concern? If, and here's where I'm coming from, we just saw the state of California go with revised budgetary numbers that were very different from what we were hearing back in January. My understanding is we're still waiting for some of that to trickle down to the county. And often what trickles down to the state and the county then might impact us as well. So, you know, given sort of all the unknowns, tariffs, inflation, you know, just the general lack of federal and state and perhaps county also funding that for basic infrastructure, right? Drains, roads, safety projects, public safety, you know, things that we've historically maybe gotten a little assistance on that weren't likely, I think, not going to see this year. Or what do you see based on, in this current budget? Do you see areas of concern?
Sure. So the things that you described, all things that would occur for us and special revenue funds, not your general fund or in Measure R, right?
Right.
And so those were very specific. And things like gas tax, right, we're recognizing a deterioration of gas tax for a number of reasons. So the budget estimates, particularly on the resource side, are extremely conservative in both your operating and on the C I P side of this. So we're not, you know, putting in projects based on grants we're not likely to get. We've definitely have very conservative estimates on basically every piece of revenue in in the budget is flat or deflating, right? We're not showing big increases in anything but property tax, which will go up. Maybe will flatten out if things turn horrible and only one time in my thirty-year career have they gone down. And and we would see that coming way far away, right? Because again, property tax is a lagging indicator. And it takes several years of of poor economy and other things for it to actually affect our our property tax. So I feel good about the two-year budget, again, with the exception of the state. And and I think the the big vulnerability is sales tax. That's where the state always sort of works. And so, you know, this is one of those times where, hey, the fact that we, our sales tax is not a huge piece of how we provide services. So, you know, it is a piece and an important piece, but at least, you know, it's it's not to the magnitude of property tax.
Thank you. And just a quick follow-up on my my concern in part is do we need to be concerned about reserving Measure R funds for, frankly, you know, road and drain infrastructure projects? In that, you know, in in my observation over the past few years, we've sometimes been able to get external funding sources beyond what's in our general budget for, you know, whether it was American Rescue Act funds or things like that, that have been able to fund some of those capital projects, which frees up general funds. But if we're not expecting some of that, I don't know, can you just?
Sure.
Know that's a little outside the scope of what we're being asked to look into.
Measure R is actually one of our healthiest funds, right? So in our annual reporting, it's reported as the general fund because it's a general tax. But of course, for budgeting and management purposes, we break it as a separate item. It has a significant fund balance. I think one of the, my slide showed that you had five million of available unspoken for general fund. You have an equally large balance in Measure R fund that's there. It's currently in our possession and it's it's not been spoken for or programmed. And over the course of this thing, I think it it grows to almost seven million. If my, I'd have to look at Scott's longer-term projections. So there's a significant, you know, resource that's accumulating there. And we don't nearly currently spend what we're taking in each year, right? So there's quite a net staying up there for for those items.
I think if I could on just add on to that for a minute, I think this is the first year, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but that we're starting to incorporate Measure R funding on an ongoing basis for the annual pavement management program. And that's an intended use of the of the funds, but I just wanted to make sure.
Right, I'd have to look to see what year it's programmed in, but maybe as early as the next fiscal year, like.
So there there is going to come a point in time where Measure R funds might, we need to might rely on them more for operational needs that are meeting the goals that were sort of defined in Measure R. But again, I think you're going to start to see that. And hopefully, we can continue to manage the general general fund the way it is. And Measure R funds can stay the way they are. But we're also, we need to be realistic about the fact that we're spending a lot of our current staff time on Measure R fund activities out of the regular general fund. And that is something that in the future, we might take a look at how we apportion staff.
And that, just to be clear, is at all levels through the organization, from maintenance workers up to the city manager.
Right.
So.
I had one small question. I happened to be looking at the departmental summary of the Parks and Rec Department. And I noticed that in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four revenues, it was approximately two point eight. And but in the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, it drops down to two point two eight one. And then in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, it goes back up to two point seven six. And so I just didn't know why there's about a five hundred thousand dollar drop drop in the projected, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I don't know if that was the actual, is different than the budget for this year or if something changed or and then it looks like we're going back up to what was historically the revenue levels from past years.
This was Parks and Rec?
Yeah, it was Parks and Rec. It's on page ninety-five. Packet page ninety-five. I was just curious.
I didn't come prepared that deep into the budget, so let me.
I can, I can, while he's looking, I can sort of, that was the actual. So I think the budget was just extremely conservative in twenty-four, twenty-five because it was probably part of the two-year budget, the previous two-year budget process.
Oh, that's possible.
The actuals came in significantly higher probably than what was budgeted in twenty-three, twenty-four. That's my.
That would make sense.
I'm assuming that's what occurred. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, yeah, that would make sense. I mean, it just, usually you budget on the prior year. And so the prior year being this dip, I just was curious if something had changed or or if it was just that wasn't an accurate budgeting year.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay, we will then open up items H one and H two, which we are currently considering together for public comment. Is there any public comment on items H one and H two? Seeing none and having no speaker cards, we will close public comment and bring back items H one and H two to the council for discussion and direction. And I know we had some discussion about the elevator. We can, we can now have that discussion.
I feel that I have been heard on the elevator topic. And mostly I just want to compliment both of you on such a complicated set of budgets and a lot of materials that you've made abundantly clear, the way you explain it, the way you present the information. So if this seems a little uneventful, it's because we've had three bites at the apple and and really very, very clear presentations. So I'd be prepared to approve.
And I I would concur with that praise. It's really very understandable. And I think that adds, that is helpful for us and is also helpful for members of the public that want transparency and want to see what the city's spending its money on.
Absolutely.
Yes, council member.
I'd like to add that it's super impressive that it's pretty much done on May third. We didn't, we didn't, you know, rewrite this thing. It was fine-tuned, so there was a lot of time spent in April, I assume, or maybe maybe many months. Anyway, it was complete May third and it still looks really good. And I feel really good about the numbers and how well you're managing all the money. It seems like it's very healthy. Very pleased.
Councilmember Hoxsey.
No, thank you so much for all the work that goes into this. I know it takes a lot of time and effort, all of you and your staff. And it seems like we're in good hands. That's great.
Yeah, and I I did want to, because I did want to, it wasn't a question, so I didn't want to say it earlier. But my view on the elevator, just in terms of direction, is I don't think we need to have the state-of-the-art elevator. But I think we need to, I favor doing things in the way that is the most efficient and the least sort of costly overall. And sometimes that means fixing things rather than, you know, having, if it's cheaper to get a fix done at one time rather than have ongoing maintenance, I would favor that. I also think it's helpful to me to have the realist, I do appreciate that we have a realistic number and whereas we may not have had in prior years. So, but I, but I, but I do hear you in that we don't need, you know, the fanciest thing. But we do need a workable. It's a really important amenity for our community. So thank you for looking into that and following up on it.
Mayor, may I have one more?
Yes, of course, vice mayor. There was a sidebar that made it sound like we've got all this excess, you know, we've got surplus in general fund. We've got surplus in Measure R. And I just want to remind ourselves that Arinda, as a philosophy that I think we all kind of got drilled into us when we were first elected, always puts money in the piggy bank. We don't spend it. And I know that we've been educated about what the what the road maintenance budget does. budget does over a 10- to 20-year timeline and the need to be putting money in a piggy bank. So please know that what I heard tonight was not that we can go and start spending more, but that we're very healthy. So I just wanted to make sure that we didn't mishear all that good news.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you, Vice Mayor, because I think we all agree with that and right now, especially when we are seeing, you know, whether it's local, state, or county government, we're seeing so many public entities look at just having to make some really difficult drastic cutting decisions. I'm very grateful that, to our, to all of you, to our city, entire city staff and to former councils for maintaining healthy reserves. Yeah. And that's why I was asking about the Measure R funding is I am concerned and maybe it's just, you know, with, maybe it's unwarranted, but I do, I do have, there's the fear of the unknown and so I want to make sure that we can, you know, fix our potholes and maintain our roads and cover the basics, provide our rec programs that our residents love, you know, and keep those reserves, including in Measure R fundings to a certain extent.
I guess I heard tonight that even these really uncertain times, that all these things could fall apart around us, but what we rely on for our main sources of revenue are not going to be that impacted and that maybe property is going to be impacted, but we'd get a seven-year notice. So I still think we're, we have less to worry about than lots of other people and.
Yeah, places. No, I agree and that's very reassuring.
Yeah, good to know.
If I could just publicly thank Doug, Scott, your staff for all of the work that you put into putting this document together. It was not a small task and I'm very appreciative of the efforts of the team.
Thank you, yes. Thank you very much to both of you and to that end.
You're applaudable.
Thank you. I'm going to.
Would it be helpful if we made a motion to start adopting beautiful things? So I'll make a motion to approve H1, the biannual proposed budget.
Okay. And second on that motion?
I'll second. You know, I thought we were combining them, so it'd be one motion.
Are we doing them together? I think for motions, we want two separate motions.
One vote or two?
It's really up the council's preference. I think the motion or motions should refer to the resolution numbers.
All right, then I will move that we approve H1 and H2.
Okay, so the motion would be to adopt fiscal years, the biennial budget, and then also to adopt resolution 30-25, adopting the capital improvement plan update.
We have to do 32-25 and 30-.
Okay. For simplicity, let's go with two motions. The first one is as described in H1, which is. Approve resolution 32-25 appropriating spending for two fiscal years.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have that motion?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Okay.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. The second motion, which I will make, is to adopt resolution 30-25, adopting the capital improvement plan update for fiscal years 26 to 30.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also passes unanimously. That takes us to item I, which is council members' reports. Anybody have reports to give tonight, since we have a little bit of time? Sometimes we're too rushed to get to these. Anyway, I don't really have much to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Will you talk about?
I will, I will then talk about last Friday, yes, and I will ask our city manager to add anything. We had, I think, an incredible, wonderful meeting here, which the vice mayor and I attended and feel free to chime in. Senator Grayson, so, you know, as you all know, we pitched an idea to him, this came out of our lobbying efforts, and the city manager and I pitched this idea about having a working group to brainstorm and bring together all the stakeholders around emergency preparedness and evacuation, so we could talk before the emergency about what might happen and what our needs were and do vulnerability assessments. And Senator Tim Grayson said, sure, let's do it. I'll help you organize, get it going and we'll do it in Arinda. And then his district staff and his capital staff, I believe, also worked on it, but really a lot of credit, I have to say, his district director as well as his local representative, Rachel, center, did a lot of work in, with us in coordinating with our city manager and city staff to put together a meeting that was, what would you say, about 40 people? 40 or so, maybe more?
Forty, forty participants and dozens of agencies.
Yeah, and we had East Bay Parks, East Bay Mod, PG&E, Caltrans, MRFD, Contra Costa Fire, San Ramon Fire, all of Law Marinda was represented by at least one council member and the city managers. We had Berkeley Council present, we had Oakland Council present, we had the East Bay Fire Coalition, so many stakeholders. I'm sure I'm listing some out. There was.
I'm going, we had, there were a couple of police chiefs, so we had, I think other than that, that was everybody.
We had a landscaping agency. We, they broke us up into, there were some initial remarks from Senator Grayson, who gave a little bit of a legislative update too, and then there was, we broke into brainstorming sessions where we were sort of assigned and broken up into different groups. That's going to result in notes. There was then sharing and the end result is that there is going to be a working group that comes out of this, the notes will be shared, there'll be a working group, and the working group will put together an East Bay wildfire master plan where we will identify our vulnerabilities and needs in a collaborative aggregate way, which I think is a fabulous idea because it sort of allows folks, I think, to be more real without feeling like by admitting a need or a vulnerability, that agency has a target on themselves, right? Because we're doing it in an aggregate manner and hopefully that, that document can then be a platform for future funding, whether that be a direct ask to the state or another agency or grants, you know, that are done in collaboration. And I just thought it was a fabulous meeting. I think it was, I'm very, very, very grateful to Senator Grayson and his staff for doing it and Vice Mayor and City Manager, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, that was perfect.
Wouldn't add anything. I would just simply say that the feedback that I've heard from other agencies from that meeting was that they were very impressed about getting everybody in the same room. There's a lot of people in that room that disagree with each other around the issues of vegetation management, but I think getting everybody together, there was a collective, you know, desire to all do things better and I think that was evident in the room. It's money, right? It comes down to money at the end of the day. And so, you know, I think this is going to be partially a plan for ways we could better coordinate, but it will ultimately be a plan that is in need of funding and ongoing maintenance. And I think for us, the takeaways were East Bay Regional Park District's very interested in getting more funding to help improve their vegetation management around the communities in which they reside. And that was good to hear that they're very eager to try and build that program. They just need money to do that, so.
That's good.
Right.
But then there was some discussion also about, in that quest for funding, if we're collaborating and working together from a very early level in planning, that maybe we can, you know, be more efficient, right? Eliminate redundancies and also by working in collaboration, possibly then obtain grant or other funding, whereas a single agency working alone couldn't. So maybe that still, again, it's all boils down to resources, we clearly need more, but hopefully this will shine a light on how our region in particular really need, can get more. But also a testimonial to the power of, of being able to, you know, engage in the political process with our state electors.
Couple of questions. Was any media present?
No, it was, it was not, it was a private invitation-only meeting, it was not a Brown Act or a public.
Is there any interest in advising the media about that meeting? I mean, I think that's really powerful information. It's a great statement about what, how we're all trying to coordinate and work together. I think I would blow that horn.
Get in contact with Senator Grayson's office to see what they plan to do with this, I think, the announcement around the plan and I think they might have some thoughts around how to strategically approach that, but we can certainly check with them to see what their media outreach opportunities might look like.
Second, so you said that you're talking about vulnerabilities and needs, but did I hear, I didn't hear that we're going to work towards evacuation discussions with everybody? Be kind of just working about.
I mean, there was a discussion of evacuation, there was a lot of discussion in my working group about, I mean, in my brainstorm, we broke into four brainstorming groups, right? And the notes were taken and the notes are going to come back to us in aggregate. So, you know, I know we were all in different groups, so maybe we could speak to it. There was a lot of concern about vegetation management and prevention in the group that I was in, discussion about the jurisdictional issues in terms of MRFDs ordinance versus, you know, partner jurisdictions, Caltrans.
I heard group was talking about evacuation.
No, they may have been.
But you don't know what the four topics were?
Well, no, we, there was so much, they were going to, they were going to bring all the whiteboards into the middle and share ideas and there were so many ideas that he's like, we need to go take this back, distill it and then circulate it to everyone for review. But for example, in my group, one thing they were talking about is fire roads that are on all these non-city properties that can be other ways out of, especially these sort of wildland interface cities like Arinda and Moraga, where there might be fire roads on parkland that otherwise aren't in the city's plans. And it's kind of funny because we had the guy who manages that for, I think, East Bay Parks, who's pretty skeptical about what that would take to maintain fire roads or what are the odds that you would be evacuating, what would essentially be towards the fire instead of away from the fire? But, you know, connecting up Moraga to San Ramon is something that's being actively worked on. So there was that, but the other thing that was interesting is we talked to, we had two Caltrans people in my group and we said, you know, whenever people want to do something to help people get load up the freeways, get on the freeways, get out faster, we get told that you can't talk to Caltrans, right? That they're horrible to deal with, they're a brick wall and they said, we're going to take that back, we're going to create a point person, we're going to see if we can help solve that. So there were, it was that sort of brainstorming really early, but the spirit of it was though sort of like, where are we stuck? What would be those breakthrough ideas? How can we, Chief Isaacs had the best line of the whole day, right? The only thing worse than no plan is, or no, the worst thing is having no plans, the second worst thing is having two plans. And the point is that each group has its own separate plans, but we here too four have not had a master plan. And so Senator Grayson seemed very excited about just the coordination for its own sake and I think the one, when the media is involved, I think there's going to be more good news than people expect. It's not just a big green desk, there's also hearing how all these separate groups have been making a lot of progress and they want to share what they've been doing. I actually think there's going to be also a lot of good news that comes out.
It also sounds like there's going to be additional sequel reform around vegetation management, that there's either a bill that's being signed around that and then I think coming out of this, there might be some more suggestions and ideas that could help further make it faster for jurisdictions to do and agencies to do the vegetation management work that's being, you know, that we need to be doing.
Yeah, there was talk about what can we do to streamline processes, both at the state level and other levels. Lot of talk about that.
And in the past, like fish and wildlife would have a problem with cutting down certain trees and so couldn't do some vegetation management that you might otherwise want to do because a different agency had an objection to it.
That, exactly.
Getting that sort of thing resolved to make it possible would be really helpful.
The only other interesting group that was there was the Landscape Contractors Association and they, you know, deal with a ton of landscapers and they're looking for consistency and guidance to give out to their members so that they can help make, help homeowners make better decisions.
Yeah.
So that was.
Plants for a fire-savvy landscape.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I think, I think it's an exciting start to a lot more.
Can we put this on our website instead of going to the media? Or on our outlook?
I'm sorry, I need to remind everybody where we are on the agenda. This is the council member's report. So if you'd like us to place this on a future agenda to talk about where to go from here, that would require.
Be better than a conversation.
I would suggest we not put it on an agenda yet because the senator is very much, this is his show, he's running it, and I think, I think we're so early that he will let us know sort of, that the next steps will become clear and maybe we should talk about it in a little bit, was the feeling I got.
And then aside from that, we had, I think, a really lovely gathering this morning at 11:00 AM to put for our pride flag raising and members of PFLAG Law Marinda were there, some youth were there and it was a really touching, lovely, family-friendly ceremony. And I want to thank all the community members who came out and I really want to thank PFLAG Law Marinda and our, and our staff, our director Trimble and our city manager and all our Parks and Rec staff for making it happen during a busy day of camp starting. Any other council member reports? Moving on, then we will go into our city manager's report.
I just wanted to provide a brief update. Staff was informing me that the Law Marinda Fee and Finance Authority is looking at their fee update. The selection of a new consultant is being reviewed currently and hopefully that selection will be made by the end of summer in August. If they were able to hold that schedule, a fee update would come probably within 12 to 18 months from that. And then, of course, an effective date of a new fee would be 60 days after an adoption by the Fee and Finance Authority. So you're looking at maybe 2027, early 2027 for a fee update. That's the report that I have and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, that takes us to item K, matters initiated. Are there any matters initiated tonight?
Nope.
Seeing none, that takes us to closed session. I will identify our closed session matters, which is simply conference with legal counsel, existing litigation regarding the OC versus City of Arinda, Contra Costa Superior Court case as identified in the agenda. Before we go into closed session, do we have any public comments on closed session matters? Seeing none, I will close closed session and we will, I mean, I will close public comment on closed session and we will resume, the council will go into closed session.